Call the meeting to order, August 18th, 2025 at 5:15. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Spohse Deech.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Beth Shimon.
Here.
Joe Sullivan or Max Yusso? Alright, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion, this rocks.
Motion by Rock, second by Tina, to approve the agenda as presented, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public open forum, I don't think we have anybody. We'll do committee and administrative reports, Lisa?
Hey, I have a short one for you. Nice. We're getting so excited. Yes, it's happening. So, we are really busy getting ready over at Falls Elementary School. And I'm so proud of everyone for their patience. We have had a lot of asbestos removal going on. The teachers really like to come in early, get their classrooms prepared, and they haven't been able to come in because they have had to wait. But they're in there bustling and working hard to get ready and things are looking great. I will have the handbook updated at next month's board meeting. We just received access to the MSDA templates, we want to make sure that all of the current updates are in our handbooks. We are very, very excited to be adding new staff members thanks to the Access Grant. So we are busy again getting everyone situated into their new classrooms and roles. And there's a lot of, I would say rejuvenation happening, so that's exciting for our kids and our community. One really, another exciting thing we have going on, we are partnering with a company called Playworks. It is a company that will come, they'll send employees onto the playground and they help train paraprofessionals and also older students, sixth graders and fifth graders, in how to have great fun at recess, help support problem solving and creativity. So they will work with training students and training paraprofessionals. We have partnered with Kuching Public Health with a SHIP grant. And we will be also partnering with North Home in Little Fork to make this happen for a $24,000 total grant. That's been allotted to us. We will also have our new PE teacher, Lexi Erickson, will be leading the, we call it the Junior Coaching Program, where she will continue to lead the effort throughout the school year to ensure that these student leaders are getting lots of coaching and advice on how to help on the playground.
That's great.
So, we're excited about that. A lot of good things happen on the playground and there's a lot of good learning that goes on and we want to make sure that we optimize that. So, we're very excited to have a variety of, I call them electives because I'm coming from the high school, but there's specialties. We have Spanish this year for our fourth through sixth graders. We have keyboarding, music, band, library, PE, and of course STEAM. So lots of options for our students. Again, we're very grateful to our community and our industry and business partners. They've been so generous in supporting all of our initiatives and they continue to just give so much to us and I just want to express my gratitude. We are currently, right now, at Falls Elementary, we're at 428 students. That doesn't count our 76 preschoolers, so while that number seems small, it's because our preschoolers are over here at West End. We have eight students who are actually leaving the community and moving. But we have gained 10 new elementary students and 15 new kindergartners. So, we're really excited about that, lots of registrations coming in.
Good.
New question?
Yeah.
The training for the playground people, I think that's wonderful, I've always wished there would be that. Is, is there a way to, do they have anything in writing or anything so that when you have new paras coming onboard, that they could be reviewing the info?
Yes, absolutely. They do provide us with digital documents and also documents that we can print out into a binder, so we do have that for future reference.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, 15 new kindergartners, is that since last spring?
That, you know what, it's on my list as just 15 new kindergartners.
Must be, so they had registration.
Over the summer.
Great.
Keeping tabs of all those kids that are registered.
Great.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So we're good, we'll keep the momentum going. Okay. Lexi, are you ready?
I don't really have the student numbers for you, I mean, we have definitely gotten some students from some surrounding schools and then, but we also have had some students that have left the area, have moved. So I'm not sure what that final number will kind of flesh out to be. We are just, you know, probably just like Lisa said, I didn't catch our first start, but just working hard to get started, just making sure all the areas are ready here in the school and the janitors have done a wonderful job to help us get ready. And, you know, we're working really hard too behind the scenes on homecoming, just making sure that it's early, so it's hard because it's early, but it also gives us a really great opportunity to set the stage and really try to reengage those students and really try to get them excited about the school year and what the upcoming events could be or what the possibilities could be. So we're excited about that and some of the things that we have planned there. And we did put out for seniors, so for just a parking spot and...
Love that.
So they, yeah, they have to have their design in by the 19th, I believe I said, and then so the 21st would be the start of painting day, so I'll put a reminder out tonight on Facebook, but we have gotten a lot of positive feedback about that. So I hope that seniors do take advantage of that and just kind of brighten things up and bring some more school pride. So we will just really be working hard on that this year to really reengage that student community, but I don't have any like really specific things because it's just, there's a lot right now. We're just doing our best, digging in and getting ready.
That's awesome. Great, thank you.
Do you have any specific questions for me?
Anybody?
No?
Think we're good?
Thank you.
(laughing)
Whoo, what a relief.
Well, just kidding.
So in the last board meeting, you asked about the new community ed director, Early Child, well she has many hats that she wears, we're trying to condense her name, but this is Molly Larson, our new community ed director, childcare, early education coordinator, so she is here to touch base with you tonight.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Molly, I'm a graduate of Falls, actually, so I'm excited to be back in my home community. So yeah, I have a new community ed, early education, and childcare coordinator for the district. So I started in July, and so I've hit the ground running, trying to implement the preschool over West End, trying to figure that out, which has been exciting, also a huge learning experience for sure. And then trying to get my community ed programs kind of run into, like I have fire safety coming up and then defensive driving are two that I'm focused on right now, and then same with taekwondo, but I want new exciting programs to be implemented too, to keep evolving with our community. But yeah, my report's pretty short because just learning the ropes. I'm excited to meet y'all and work alongside you, so thank you.
Happy to have you.
Yeah. Tim?
I guess I'm the only one that knows what he's doing over here.
Just briefly, the numbers for the fall sports, football, in the mid-fifties was grade seven through 12 and through 23, 7th and 8th graders, which I'm very excited about.
Great.
Fifty mid-fifties of the seventh through 12 volleyball, again about 24 7th and 8th graders, so that's great numbers. Across country in the upper twenties, girls swimming in 80, 25, 7th through 12, nine girls up for cheering. And probably the most exciting thing is with our Huddle TV where everybody watches the games during the fall/winter. Now we're gonna add in spring, we're gonna have baseball and softball games on our huddle. And we're also starting an advertising campaign that is hopefully gonna keep our costs down, allow our member community, so we've got two big sponsors over the past couple of weeks, and working on their commercials, they're executing that together, so hopefully that is gonna allow our school and our booster clubs to be able to focus their money in other areas. So if there's any businesses out there that are watching and that would like to support Huddle TV, we would certainly appreciate a phone call and we'll get you all set up.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we're having some technical difficulty out there, so we'll put the recording up later this evening online and we'll share that on our social media. One of the things that I want to start with this evening is, on Friday, I had sent out a high-five post to some of the key staff that have really worked hard over the summer and I just really think it's important that I recognize them tonight. Sometimes I think when people are off during the summer, they don't realize maybe that there is a large group of people here working behind the scenes and with all the changes this year, they've really risen to the occasion because they've had to really take on a lot in not only change, but just in things from cleaning out our district to redesigning and moving, there's just been so much behind the scenes work happening. So the first group that I really would like to recognize is our new technology director, Casey Stenberg, Lisa Orin, Max Yusso, and Michelle Cordell. They have been a tech team, not only for the district and working behind the scenes, but they have been instrumental in making sure our technology is getting cleaned and organized for the next school year, but also they've been, Casey and Michelle especially have been pivotal in the new, in the new Infinite Campus conversion. And without Casey and Michelle, we would not be where we're at today. Though there's been challenges, those two have really, they have just really worked endless hours to make this happen and do the extra work that needs to happen. The next group that I want to briefly talk about is our facilities team. We have a new facilities and transportation manager and that is Jeremy Anderson. He has really taken on this roles and responsibility of the work he's doing, he has taken it very seriously. He's been doing a deep-ridded assessment of some of the things that maybe have been neglected or things that have really piled up, and he's really working on consistency throughout the district and really mapping out what the future's gonna look like for everything, from how we clean to how spaces are used. And that's from buildings to grounds to transportation routes. He's been very good at communicating with our administrative team, listening to feedback. So I really want to make sure we recognize what the facilities team has had to do with the changes in preparation, getting ready for the asbestos removal, to moving programming and staff, to cleaning and getting ready for the new school year, has just really been remarkable. They have really gone above and beyond and I can't say thank you enough to that team. The next group is our new administrators. We know that it was announced on social media and it'll come out in the newsletter, but Principal West is the new administrator for Falls Elementary School and Principal Tate is the new principal for Falls High School. They have been tasked with a lot of new learning and they have also risen to the occasion. I think sometimes they're wondering what the heck they got into, but they, every day they're stepping up and I'm learning from them and they're providing really great feedback. But I think what is most exciting is the energy that they're both bringing to their schools, just by, you can just tell by sitting in this room, some of the changes that have happened, but there's some really great positive things that are gonna happen. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna have barriers and challenges during this construction phase and the process of just learning something new, but Principal Tate, Principal West have just done a remarkable job in looking forward to the future and I just really appreciate their efforts. And then last but not least, I want to briefly touch base on the district administrative office team, Michelle, Kendra, and Jen. They are, in my opinion, some of the biggest silent heroes of the district, you don't see them very often, but what they do in the business world really is what keeps the wheels turning in the district. And there's so many new people here and new processes and procedures that I, they are just pivotal in what has happened behind the scenes in the district, from finances to systems and structures and to accounts receivable, accounts payable, HR, they work tirelessly and I just really want to give them a shout out. I wish they were here tonight because they've been pivotal in moving us forward. The next thing I want to address is, you're gonna see on the agenda tonight, Head Start, I want to give you an update on Head Start. We are making small gains forward, but after meeting with the district legal team, we have found there's a number of things that we have to do, we can't just move a new program that is not funded through our educational system. We have to work through some resolutions in order to bring them here. So the first resolution that you're gonna see on the board agenda tonight is, we have to recognize as a school district that the two spaces that they are looking at using, that we do not need them for educational purposes to serve our students. We have to recognize that as a school district, the board has to approve that to move us to the second resolution. And then the second resolution, what that will look like will be, we will design the parameters of the rental agreement, but in that process, we have to work with the nutrition department and MDE because there's components to how the students eat and the food that is served, that they have to meet their requirements. And we as a public entity have to meet those requirements. So there has to be a formal agreement between the district, MDE, and Head Start. So after you make your decision tonight, we will move to phase two. So right now, the director of Head Start and I are trying to determine if we can make that work later in the fall, mid-year, or if we want to just look at a fresh start for the new school year. So I'll update you as he and I work through your resolution approvals and MDE approval. Do you have any questions on Head Start right now?
Is there anything we can do to move it forward so that it would work for this fall?
There really isn't. We have to go through the legal process and that's one of the things that the district attorneys felt very strongly about, is making sure that we have everything that we need on our end to move this forward because they think it's a fantastic idea. They just want to make sure that we have everything that we need, our eyes dotted, our t's crossed.
Of course. So are, are we going to be able to move forward this fall?
Possibly. It depends, you know, how fast we can make the resolutions work and we have to get that agreement between Head Start, MDE, and the district, the food piece, and then the second phase of the agreement of rental.
Plus moving and setting up the space, so...
The spaces are ready, that's one thing, like we...
Bring all their stuff.
They have to bring all their stuff, they have to move their things, and then they have some compliance components to, they have to meet certain requirements as a Head Start program, and that could be from how many exits they have to, you know, windows, the treatments, and so we have to make sure we're in compliance with that. And then if we're not, they bring that funding to update it based on what they need. So the next thing I want to talk about tonight is the referendum, I want to give you a brief update on the referendum. And I think Nicole is on, let's see. Jessica, could you just turn the audio on, I want to make sure that she can hear us?
Nicole, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now.
Alright, okay. Hi Nicole, can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can now, I was getting a little worried.
No, feel free to jump in at any time, I will give a brief overview. So as you know, we have a referendum committee which is served by Huddle and myself, but member each, we also have member Johnson and then member Crosby. One of the things that has happened is, you know that we have had to go through three bidding phases in order to really meet the outcome that we are seeking in regards to the process of the referendum. As you know, the first two were not successful when it came to getting the volume of bids that we were looking for, even getting bids. It was a busy time of year, there is a number of indicators as to why it did not work out the way it did. We had to revisit what the scopes looked like, we needed to revisit how it would be presented to the people who were bidding, we had to separate some of the areas versus have them together. And as you know, during this last one, we went to bid, we were lucky enough to be, have a number of bids and all areas were fulfilled. With that being said, there's a lot of work to be done in IST 361 and I think we know that as board members and community members of the district, but also we know that the infrastructure is not only old, some of the areas of upkeep have not been taken care of maybe the way they needed to, in addition to some of the compliance factors by the state that we have to, we have to meet. And that has to do with sprinkler systems, a number of different components, including the asbestos removal, and those areas are not cheap. So after reviewing the bids with the Nexus team, what we have learned in this process and you're going to see it tonight, you're not only gonna see all of the bids that you'll be approving this evening that have been presented to you and the people who will be awarded, but in the conversation that we're gonna have tonight is, the bid factors that came in, the budget was over and it was over significantly. It was over approximately 5.9 million. So it was very important to the committee, the referendum committee, in addition to the committee members that volunteered to serve on this committee in conversation with Ellers and Nexus. We have really come up with some, what I would say, creative solutions. They may not be the solutions we are seeking, but we have to come up with a solution because the board is committed to living within the tax capacity that we said that we were going to commit to if the referendum passed. And overwhelmingly, there was no discussion that we would even consider going back to the community during this discussion. So one of the things in regard to the outcome of that is that then in order to get us back into the referendum dollar amount, we had to look at creative options so we could possibly move forward. So with that, one of the things that I want to share with you tonight is, we've talked about my recommendation and my recommendation to move forward with the bidding process is that we really are committed to focusing on our education. We are an educational institution and I want to make sure that we are promising and fulfilling the capacity of what we said we were gonna do when it comes to the educational learning environment for our students. I am not stating that I do not think athletics and activities are not important, I think those are very important and they're a vital part and instrumentally intertwined into our school community to really promote culture and climate within our school community. One of the things that we looked at was just how can we fulfill all areas by modifying some of the design and scope. So with that being said, one of the things that came up was revisiting the Bronco Arena scope. So we had some deep, robust conversation on, do we need to truly add the addition or can we modify within? We talked about things from removing stairwells to full redesign of the existing Bronco Arena and really taking a deep-ridded look. So what you're seeing on the board tonight, the board approval for presentation to the school board tonight, is you are seeing approval of fulfillment of Falls High School, you're seeing fulfillment of Falls Elementary School, you're seeing the fulfillment of the stadium in addition to the asbestos removal and sprinkler addition to Bronco Arena. So that is what you are voting on this evening as you look at your agenda and the bidding scope. Nicole, did I, did I?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Sorry, there's also the roofing at Bronco Arena.
Yes. So roofing at Bronco Arena, the sprinkler system at Bronco Arena, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So what we are recommending this evening then is for you to approve the bid on the things that I just stated. We are going back to redesign on Bronco Arena. And I had another meeting with Nexus today and what we, I will be recommending is, we will possibly put out a bid for redesign of existing Bronco Arena, but also another comparison, new bid for just Bronco Arena with the expansion. So it's not all in conjunction anymore, so then we can take a deep-ridded look and do a side-by-side comparison of the two. So up until the meeting today, even one of the hockey coaches was sending ideas. Is this what we want? Truly, it's not what we want, but we cannot, we have an overcapacity of six, or 5.9 million dollars. So that means we have to get creative, think outside of the box, but still do what we said we would do in follow-through on the referendum. So for tonight, again, you're bidding on the bids that were proposed to the contractors for Falls High School, Falls Elementary School, the stadium, roofing, sprinkler system to Bronco Arena, that is what is on the agenda script.
And no change in scope at those locations?
Correct.
Yep, okay, just want to be clear.
Yep. Nicole, is there anything you would like to add to that?
When you say no changes to scope, Jessica, I just want to make sure, like, we're gonna look at some value engineering aspects to possibly save some more money.
Sure.
Like overall, yes, the scope would be the same, the additions, the, this would include the infill of that courtyard at the elementary for the STEAM room.
Yep. I just felt like aesthetically, it's, you know, we might be doing some things aesthetically, but the general, the general contract, or the general construction and design is the same for the schools.
Yep.
Yeah.
And when she talks about value added, so one of the things that Nexus has been doing is they've been working with the contractors, the bidding companies, and where can we maybe do something where we can save some dollars? I have been in conversation with one business and we're just having a conversation, is there something that we could do to save some sort of money in some area? So that's when we talk about that value-added component, that's what that means. Other than that, that is the report I have on the referendum. What I do ask is that if community members have questions, they either reach out to me or to a board member. Again, our members on the school board that are serving on the referendum committee are member Johnson, member Crosby, and member Spohse Deech. I do ask that they don't reach out to our building principals, I really want to take that off their plate, and I do ask that they reach out to me or a school board member to help answer those questions. Do you have any questions for either of you, Nicole? Is there any discussion you would like to have on this? Okay. Last but not least, we're getting ready for the start of school. I know there's many questions out there regarding bus times, school start times, just know that we will be delivering, most of that information will come out this week in addition to our back-to-school night. We are still working on some tweaks in transportation, we're gonna have a new student information system, so parents are going to be getting an email to set up their new student portal. In addition to, we will have some new processes and procedures for the start of the school year because of construction. We are gonna have some new possible drop-off locations and pickup locations because we will have some very heavy equipment on our school site, so just know that that information will be shared after back-to-school night. If you have any questions, you can directly reach out to your school principal, your administrative office teams, or you can reach out to me or the transportation department. A quick update on our solar panels, I am working with Ziegler, they have done what they needed to do in assessing the grounds and we will be getting ready for our first delivery in the next month and we will be getting that process started, so we're very excited about that. They will be coming to possibly the September board meeting to give you a good solid update, but that process is also in incubation stages of breaking grounds, we're also very excited about that. Our high school science teachers have all volunteered to be a part of that, so it can be a great learning opportunity for Falls High School students and we are very excited to see what that looks like in the next school year.
That's great. Awesome. Thank you. Policy committee, we, I know that the athletic committee is reviewing the handbook, otherwise I don't think we have any, just the normal policy updates, so we've been having each meeting. Athletic committee?
We don't have any updates at this time, we haven't met since our last meeting, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss a few items and then we're gonna do walkthroughs of the arena and the pool area and all that as well.
Okay. Legislative?
Yes. This year legislatively, there is zero dollars in new money for the school. This year legislatively, there is $0 in new money for the schools in '26 and '27. And all schools get some money based on free and reduced lunch count forms that we ask every parent to fill out. Even when we offer free meals, it's important for them to fill them out because it is the way that we get some educational dollars. And there is also some recent change in the law requiring unemployment benefits for some of our staff who do not work in the summer. And that money was taken from a light rail project in the state in order to cover that. So this will cover costs for unemployment benefits for approximately two years. And then there will have to be some more changes in the way to find the funding. There is also about $125 million to special ed that cuts coming this year, and another $125 million in the following year. So we're going to have to look hard, that's for the whole state, but we're going to have to look hard in trying to find how we can be smart in how we can cut funding for special ed. Let's see, there is also some library aid funding that is now cut in half for each district. There are also modifications to the Minnesota paid leave rules, the teacher pension funds, the teacher substitute rules, and the rules regarding school board meeting remotely for how their participation is going to be done. We did not get any seasonal recreation property aid. And also, there are, the schools can start sending in resolutions for the MSBA 2026 platform through the month of September. So we only have through the month of September to get resolutions in. And what we need to do is let our legislators know exactly what our school district needs them to work on. Or if we do not let our legislators know, or we do not submit resolutions, then what we're going to have to do is go along with whatever someone else decides. And that would not be good for our school because every district is different. So we have to let our legislators know. Hopefully, you have some good resolutions. And if you want, you can give them to me because I can get them over to be turned into resolutions, but again, by the month of September. And there will be new meetings coming up each month now, and I'll try to get some better reports for you. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else for reports? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Dale and second by Jessica. To approve the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We will move to... Action items. Number one, improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD #361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district." Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Tina. Second.
I'll make that.
Second by Rox. To accept the gifts and donations of volleyball boosters, huddle and ice machine, $1,000; basketball boosters, lights and ice machine, $2,960; baseball boosters, ice machine, $200. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whereupon the resolution was declared adopted. And 1B, approve expanding care and learning opportunities for ISD 361 youth award grant for $25,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jessica.
I'll second.
Second by Dale. To approve the expanding care and learning opportunities for ISD 361 youth grant for $25,000. Discussion?
Can we get some detail on that?
Yeah.
I'm very excited to tell you, you know, as you know, Grant Writer Ashley Hall got an exciting opportunity. Obviously, very disappointed to lose her. She's done some remarkable work. She and I are continuing to work together to talk about other opportunities as we interview for this position. But the week that, her last week with me, we were awarded this grant. This will go towards our childcare center that Molly is currently working on. We're looking at late fall, early winter, possibly opening. But we have a lot of planning to do in order to get materials, to get learning, teaching and learning opportunities in place for the kids. We also have made it to second rounds in two very large grant opportunities for our school district when it comes to learning spaces. So I just want to recognize the work that Ashley's done in the short amount of time she's been with us. She has brought a significant amount of money to the district on a small level to very big level, and we are currently waiting for two grants that we just made it to the second round. Principal Tate just did an interview for one of them. And so I just, I want to extend my gratitude for what she's brought to the district this year. It was an unfortunate loss for us.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, maintain facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for use by students and the community. Well, review and approval of bid proposals and selected awards for the August 2025 referendum work. Do I have a motion?
What is this now?
This is the bids that we need to approve.
Oh, isn't that the next one? 2B?
No.
That's for the bonds.
That's for the bonds.
The bonds.
Oh, that's for the bonds.
Yes.
All right.
This is bids, yeah.
So we're going to have discussion then?
Can we make a motion?
First, when you.
Yeah, motion?
Okay.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion by Jessica and second by Rox. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, yeah.
So I wrote, I'll just read this since I wrote up. So my comment on the referendum is it's apparent the city of International Falls, ISD 361, and Kuchi County to some extent have been delinquent in their responsibility to maintain their respective facilities and infrastructure for quite some time. This has come to light more so in the past year. The recent vote on the water facility, I believe, is a good indicator of the frustration residents are feeling as a result. If we were voting on the referendum this year, I doubt it would pass due to the tax pressures being felt and higher costs of living anticipated. The budget for the referendum included a 15% add for doing work in International Falls. We rebid the project twice, and the most of recent bids came in 20% over the budget. Whether the contractors bidding on the project are justified in raising their prices due to the uncertainty of today's economy or not, we are faced with the reality that proceeding with this project comes at a premium cost of approximately 35%. It may be an anomaly, or it may foretell the future. In either case, it is extremely unfortunate. As a taxpayer, I cannot support spending taxes at a discounted rate of 65 cents on the dollar. As a school member, board member, I have a fiduciary responsibility to do what's best for the school district, and I cannot justify having the school district pay this bounty either. Beth and some board members, including myself, were not part of the team that developed the scope for this project. Rather than proceeding as proposed, my preference is for the project to be suspended until a thorough reevaluation, the entire scope can be completed and justified in terms of needs and costs appropriate to the new reality facing communities like ours.
Any other comments or discussion?
I have lots of comments, but I guess we went to the taxpayers. We were approved for the referendum. We've built out a plan that we think is appropriate for our schools, our children, and our community. Yes, it came in over budget, so we are going to have to revisit some of the scope, which I think probably happens in any project, both personally and professionally. We always have to revisit scope when we get our bids, right? You plan for, you try to plan for utopia, and you're never going to get everything that you want. And it's unfortunate. But I feel very strongly that if we don't move forward with this... Well, first of all, we've made an obligation to the taxpayers. We've cashed in bonds, we have to move forward. Second of all, it's only going to get more expensive. We could spend another two years looking at scope and getting bids and doing this and that and the other. And as past years have shown, it's only going to get more expensive as we go forward. So my recommendation would be, take what we got. We'll revisit the scope on the arena to save the 5.9 million and still be able to do some things to the arena, which will be positive. And then maybe look further down the road at doing, you know, more of the extensive addition that we planned on. We'll have to look at that later on. But I think not moving forward with this with Falls Elementary School and Falls High School would be a disservice at this point to our kids and our community.
Rox?
I feel that if we do not move ahead with this, that our buildings are going to be in worse shape over time. And that we need to at least slowly move ahead to improving our buildings. And if we don't keep our buildings looking presentable, I don't see how we could really be an attractive school district to people who want to move into town. There are people who come and look at our buildings and ask questions about our programming. And if we can't show them something that's attractive, they may not stay. And our biggest thing that we can do for our community right now is try to get more and more people to move into our community.
Yep.
Anybody else? Toni?
I agree with Rox, what she just said, that was my whole point too. If we leave the buildings longer, it's just going to get worse.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that too. I think we have to move forward. The referendum was passed. And like Jessica said, we'll revisit the arena and see what we can do. But I think the school's just going to get in worse shape if we don't start working on it.
Okay, Rox?
Just one additional thing, just so that people that listen to the recording of this, we are not going to ask for any more money. We are still going to stay within the boundaries of the money that was, that we had outlined to be spent. We're just finding cost-cutting measures within as we do the design and that kind of thing. So I would hate to have anyone think we're going to spend more. We're only spending what we had passed on the referendum.
Yep, that's a good point, Rox.
Yes.
I think it's very important, you know, as I was presenting earlier, I think it's very important, I want to speak, I believe, on behalf of all of us. I do want, now I want to dismiss the use of Bronco Arena from our figure skaters to our hockey players to anybody who uses that facility. One of the things that I can tell you on behalf of the school district is we have some opportunities to find additional funding because of Bronco Arena. And I would state on behalf of our building principals, on behalf of our athletic director, on behalf of the school board and community members who use all the facilities in our district, we are committed to growing and updating all of our facilities in any capacity that we can. And I can tell you, as a new school leader to your district, I do have fear of not moving forward. Obviously, it's the board's decision. But every week, we are tasked with a new expense because of infrastructure failure. And that is from our learning spaces to needing 21st century STEM facilities, to our trades component, having updated facilities for welding and construction. In addition to, as you know, half the heater system in Bronco Arena just went out. That is a $50,000 cost that we don't have a budget for, but the community members are rising to the occasion. And with some of the historical sites like Bronco Arena and our stadium, we have grant opportunities. One of the things that our grant writer Ashley Hall was working on was a Bronco Arena legacy campaign. We have phenomenal partners in Falls Education and Purple Pride. I don't want to dismiss the use of Bronco Arena because I think it's a pillar in this community. And I want people to know that we are going to work really hard to continue the efforts and updates of that building. It's just going to take us a little bit more time. But I can tell you, as a district leader, we are committed to that.
Amen.
Dale?
Yeah, yeah, my point is that, you know, this started out bad from the first bid, and I think we needed to go back and correct some things. I just don't think we're getting the value for the dollars. And maybe we had a bad scope to begin with, I don't know. That was before my time. But we've got to spend our money wisely because it's disappearing.
By scope, are you saying?
What we are doing.
Like need versus want, or?
Well, for example, you know, we used to graduate 300 kids here. We graduate 69, it's the same building. So there's a discrepancy there. And maybe we're not doing this right. Maybe we need to go back and take a second look. You know, I don't want to see the school fail by any means. But I don't want to spend money that's not getting us anything either.
Right, no, understandable. Rox?
I talked to someone from the city's area this last weekend, and their school board ran into the same thing. They had to cut back on the things that they were doing once they got their referendum because the costs were high. And I believe it's common nowadays. This economy is horrible. My own budget is going up constantly, and it's not going to go down. I know it's not ever going to go down. It's going to stay the same or keep going up. So I'm concerned about that too. But I guess what I'm trying to say, my point here is that a lot of schools are running into this, and I don't think it's a reason to stop doing the renovations of our school.
So a question, I guess, for you, Beth. So when we do these, and let's say, you know, we have the bids, and you said, you know, talking to contractors and saying, okay, instead of using, I'll say, this material, we use this material for the flooring, or whatever it is, that can potentially save us money, and we can do that as we
Yes.
work on the project.
And so that money that maybe we get extra, we can invest in somewhere else that we said we would do. And I can tell you behind the scenes, from board members to myself, to Nexus, to Ellers, people are working really hard behind the scenes. And Rox said it well, this is not unusual. This can happen. Does it happen every time? Absolutely not. But, you know, I've spoken to our district attorney. I've met numerous times with Nexus. This has happened in other school districts. And that is one of the risks that you take when you start a scope. Like Dale said, you know, you've been on this roadmap, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, three years, four years? So when you look at that wide scope of time, things change. So our next approach in some of those barriers, we have to maybe look and do things slightly differently to meet the capacity of what we said we would do, even though 90% of it or 80% of it will be exactly the same. But we will still be convicted to following through in what we said we were going to do in all capacities. One or two areas might look different.
Okay, Rox?
Another thing that I think we need to think about is that, as I've said numerous times before, programming in schools have changed. And even though we do have less students, the way we educate our students and the type of programs we offer and classes... students, the way we educate our students and the type of programs we offer and classes and activities, they, we're, we're not like at a premium of extra empty spaces, so it's not like we could all move into one building and then only remodel one building. We still are in need of all our spaces, and it's simply because we do, we do a good job in keeping up with the times on the way we educate our students, and it requires space too. So, if, if we were to start all over, the only thing I could think of is knock down every building and build a new one, well, that would cost us way more than what we're spending here.
And then my last thing that I would just like to say tonight, even though I addressed it from a teaching and learning perspective, the other thing that we have to remember is our elementary school, Falls Elementary, is not ADA compliant, and we have to make sure we're meeting the needs of the students who receive special education services in addition to our community members who have special needs. And then on the additional side of that, we also have some security, safety and security updates that are, in my opinion, the number one priority in this process. So, I, I do understand the concerns, I, I really do, but I do recommend that we move forward.
Yeah, and I know in the beginning, we did a, an assessment of, you know, what would we love to have, what would we like to have, and we, you know, built this, and then we took that, and said, okay, what are the needs versus the wants, and slowly, you know, went through and said, okay, we don't really need this, it's just, you know, would be nice to have extra type of a thing, so we'll move that out. And we really focused and did a lot of work on narrowing it down to what really needed to be done, critical things that need to be done.
Not only is the school board, but we went back to the community and had community feedback, what do you think we need and want as well?
Right, yep, yeah. Rocks?
And also, being on the committee for the referendum, we, we have been looking ever since, you, you, Joanne, talk about the needs versus the wants. That was narrowed down in the beginning, but now that we've been on this committee meeting constantly, every, it seems like almost every room, the designers will come and say, well, let's, if, if we don't put tile in, and let's just put paint and cheaper flooring and this kinda thing, it will save us this much money. And so, we are constantly, even up until today, and we will continue to look at ways to make thing, to, to do things cheaper, but still have it looking nice.
Right, yeah, 'cause I don't want us to, I want us to be quality to, you know, obviously, we don't wanna just put whatever in, and it doesn't last.
And it doesn't last in two years.
Yeah, right.
No, we're, we're still looking at the right things, but to Rocks's point, yeah, there's, it's a constant conversation of, like, let me give you an example. We were talking about lockers in Bronco Arena, okay? And the, they were saying, well, you can do wood lockers, and some of the locker rooms are steel lockers, and some of them, and I said, well, first of all, we should be consistent, right? And I said, durability, I would think of steel lockers would be better, and from Nexus, Russ said, well, the difference between wood lockers and steel lockers is two hundred thousand dollars. And I said, well, then, to me, it's not even a question, we go with the steel lockers, you know? So, that's the kinda stuff we're constantly asking about, and they're providing that feedback for us.
Well, but I think this is a, a great conversation to have, because it shows that, I mean, you guys have worked really hard as the committee, and, you know, we have, you know, worked hard, that we've thought of all these things, we've worked on these things, we want what's best for, you know, our school, we want what's best for our community, and so, yeah, I think it's great. Any other suggestions or comments? All right. So, we have a motion by Jessica and a second by Rocks for the approval of the bid proposals and selective alternate awards for the August 2025 referendum work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion carries. All right, adopt the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, series 2026A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of two million, seven hundred dollars, and taking other actions with respect thereto.
Seven hundred thousand.
Did I say, what did I say?
Seven hundred dollars.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Two million, yeah, two point seven million. Motion by?
I'll motion.
Motion by Jessica, second?
I'll second.
Second by Rocks?
We gotta explain this a little bit, because I know I had questions when I first saw this. So, Beth, keep me honest here, but, and this is good that I have to explain it, 'cause I didn't have to ask the question. Why are we asking for more, issuing more bonds when we've already cashed in what the taxpayer, you know? The reason is, the original bonds that we cashed in, we got at a premium, and so, we got more for less, basically. So, to, to stay with, we're still staying within the, the referendum, what we committed to the taxpayers, we can issue these two point seven million dollars more in bonds to have that money for the project still within what we promised the taxpayers. 'Cause I saw that, and I thought, no, 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 we're not taking more money.
Thank you for, for talk, talking to that point.
Yeah.
Dale?
Okay, it's still money, if we weren't in this position, we wouldn't be spending it otherwise, so. You know, if the bids had come in reasonable, we wouldn't be in this position of having to offset almost six million dollars.
I agree we wouldn't have to offset, but I disagree that we wouldn't be spending it, because I really think that there are things on our want list that we probably would've said, oh, we could still do this, and in, you know, and still be in, within the commitment that we made to the taxpayers, so let's do this. I think we would just add to the scope.
Yeah, we had a, a list of things that were put, uh, things that were put on a list if we had the extra dollars, so I think if we, no matter what, if we would've had the extra dollars, we were gonna go and look at that list, because we had a dollar amount that we could spend on our renovations.
Yep.
Yeah, but this is money that's being spent, because the bids are so high, and we're already reducing scope for the arena, so.
Any other? All right, did you have something, Rocks, or no?
Well, I, I don't know, I guess, I don't know that the money was spent, because the bids are higher, the money is spent, because we, we got two point seven million more from the, the sale of the bonds, so it would've been spent no matter what.
Motion by Jess and second by Rocks to issue the, the general obligation facilities maintenance bonds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Okay, motion carries. Approve the resolution declaring a part of ISD 361 school property not needed for school purposes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that. Oh, I'll second.
Motion?
What is, what is this?
By Tina and second by Rocks. Discussion?
This is the Head Start, isn't it?
So, this is the Head Start resolution. The resolution that will go, that you'll sign tonight is for two to three rooms, and really, it's a two point five room, because they are looking at the possibility, if things go well, that they would also bring their infant room, which is not a full classroom. So, we did leave some room for Grace in the event that they make the decision to also bring the, the infant room over, so we did leave that two to three rooms for their, for them to inhabit. But, one of the things that I, I wanna make sure that you know is that this is on the early education wing, and the, we have a number of classrooms due to the programming shifts that we've done between the ALC, due to our online learning, in addition to some of the new programming that we've offered, we consolidated, and then we have some teachers that are just, the teachers used to use different rooms for different classes, we moved away from that this year, so if they're teaching three different classes, the students will have the same classroom. So, that is why we can afford this space at this time. If we had classes, graduating classes back to three hundred, which we wish we did, right? But, right now, our graduating classes are around seventy students, so we do have the space right now, we are looking at a, a two-year commitment to begin with, and then we'll revisit it after that timeline is fulfilled.
Okay. All right, any other discussion or questions?
I'd just like to say that having Head Start in our building is gonna be a wonderful addition. Our school district has always provided early childhood special ed to Head Start, it'll make it easier for us to provide that programming that way, and their, their, the morals and the values and the things that these preschool teachers teach, I've seen it for years and years, it's just a wonderful program, so I'm happy if we can get them in here.
All right, we have a motion by Tina and a second by Rocks to approve the resolution declaring a part of ISD 361 school property not needed for school purposes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Motion by Tina and second by Jessica to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.